I want to call forth for the special city council meeting in Dunellen for April the 19th. Could we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. Father, I thank you for the ability to still be able to meet freely like this. I pray, Father, that you will give the wisdom and the guidance of this council to make the right and wisest decisions. I pray, Father, that you will continue to bless Dunellen, this council, and all our law enforcement, and see that everyone gets home safely. For in Jesus Christ's precious holy name I ask his praise. Amen.
Amen.
Present.
Captain Alima.
Here.
Assistant Fire Officer.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here, McQuaid.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yaw.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website as City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, April 13th, 2023.
First thing I want to do is I want to introduce our sheriff of Marion County, Billy Woods. He's agreed to have come back to this meeting again, and I appreciate his presence and listening to all this. Of course, Mike McQuaid, he is here as well. I want to remind everybody, this meeting is solely for discussions concerning the Dunellen Police Department. Also, I want to recognize a number of our policemen are here. They were all invited if they weren't on duty and they had a desire to be here. And a number of them have shown up, which I am glad to see. If you notice in your agenda, public comments are going to follow after we do this presentation and discussion. So please hold those comments until then, and anything comments you want to make, of course, will be addressed at that time. Please do not make any comments related to any other subjects, because to me, this is a very important meeting and should be solely for the purpose of our police department. I'm going to start with something that may sound a little odd. I would like everyone on this council to raise your hand if last week and this week you still support our police and the Dunellen Police Department and want to continue having them in Dunellen. The reason I'm doing that is our newspapers and media have still got this wrong. They said there was some question as to whether this council supported the police. I've read these articles again this week. Most of them are getting it right, but a few of them are still getting it wrong. It is unanimous on this council, we are not here to do away with our police department. Okay? Now, I'm going to start this off, and I beg you guys' forgiveness. I tried to say as little as I could last week. I plan to say a whole lot tonight, because I think a lot of the information still that is out in the public is incorrect. It's gotten turned around, it's gotten confused, and so I'm going to go back through today's events as they occurred and what I know. And as part of that, I have been criticized greatly for the comments I have made before this council over the last four or five years, and I'm going to address that. Okay? As a citizen of this town for years, I have stood at that podium and criticized speeding in this town. I am not criticizing our police officers. I'm criticizing our lack of enforcement of speeding, and I look to the top for that problem and why it wasn't solved. So although some people have turned this around that I don't support the police, that couldn't be farther from the truth. But when I see our policemen following orders and not writing speeding tickets, I have a problem, because we got speeding in this town. Okay? I asked the chief numerous times to address speeding. I heard a number of comments from him as to why he couldn't. I'm going to go back to a meeting before I was on this council, and somebody on this council raised the question of what are we going to do about speeding? And immediately, our police chief said, well, that would be in violation of the Waldo Wall, which could be farther from the truth. Not only did they say that in this meeting, they went to the media and said this on the news and in newspaper print, that we wanted him to violate the Waldo Wall, which was incorrect. The citizens of this town want speeding enforced. I've also been criticized for the evaluation I did on the chief. I look at the chief as a very important person in this whole network of what makes up Dunellen. He does a good job, no question about it, but he is lacking in responding to public comment and public issues. One was speeding. The other one, I understand, he is on the litter task force from Marion County, but I've yet to hear him say anything about litter task force here in Dunellen. We have a drug problem in Dunellen, and it's mainly isolated at Chapman, but it is also downtown. I've discussed that with the chief. And to his defense, he actually says he went out and checked the downtown issue concerning drugs, and I believe he did that. When it comes to speeding, I'm going to give you some statistics. We just received some information concerning the stops made by our police officers in the month of February and March. During the month of February, we had 116 police stops of motor vehicles. During the month of March, it was 107. In those two months, we had a total of five speeding tickets written. That's hard to believe. If you drive the streets of this town like I do, I see speeding every time I get in my truck. Okay? So to say we've only had five tickets written in this town in two months, I find that a little hard to believe, but that's what the statistics are. And I've got that information if anybody would like it. It was given to us by our police department. I received a number of letters and a number of texts and messages from a lot of citizens, and one specifically from an officer in our police department. And to say it was not glowing as far as I was concerned, that's pretty accurate. He said, I have a long history of criticizing the police and a lack of support by this council. Again, I was addressing my comments to the head of the police department, not our police. He also goes in and criticizes, why haven't this council done anything about the pay scale of our police officers? If you look at this council, four of us, let me back up. One of us has been here one day. One of us has been here three months. One person's been here two years. This is a problem in this town that's been here for years. Okay? To criticize the current council on what the pay scale is of the officers in this town, I think is a little unfair. It should have been addressed. It should have been addressed, starting with our police chief. If he recognized that policemen in this town were underpaid, he should have come to the council and asked or begged for raises. He did not. I don't know why he did. The last two weeks, I've met with a lot of sheriffs, a lot of chiefs, and a lot of mayors across central Florida, and I've gotten a lot of information, and I'm going to share some of that with you tonight. One sheriff had the same problem we have here. I asked him what he did. He said, I put together some numbers and demonstrated to my council, our policemen were underpaid. Last year, he got them all raises because of that. Our chief has not done that. So if our policemen have a problem with their salaries, I think the criticism should start with their own chief. Now, I want to back up and talk about the timeline of the events that happened to get us to where we are today. During the last week of March, all of us on this council, which ranks well on the council, had to do an evaluation of the chief and turn it in by the end of March. I did that, and I believe everybody else did. Of course, it's all out there in public information now. Turn my in. First thing I can tell you, that's the worst evaluation form I'd ever read. It's totally bad. There's nothing good about it. It's been used apparently for four or five years, and it's pathetic. I've done evaluations my whole career, forty-something years, and I've probably done a thousand, considering I had over 100 employees that looked to me for advice. And I am very critical about people who don't do their job. And if you do your job, I will write you a rating review. But if you don't, I'm not going to give you a rating review. Anyway, we turned these in last week in March. I was going on vacation last week in March, so I turned mine in actually a week earlier. Mandy calls me on Saturday, she was actually working on Saturday, and told me she was summarizing some of these, and the forms weren't making any sense. She and I discussed it, and I said, Mandy, this is a horrible form, because if you write down NA, the chief gets a zero. That's not right. Okay? Just because you don't know how to evaluate him, you shouldn't give him a zero. Some of our council did that. I did not. I didn't know what to do, but I wasn't going to give him a zero. I looked at it in my mathematical mind and said, well, since I don't know, he doesn't deserve a zero, and he doesn't deserve a one, and he doesn't deserve a five, because I don't know. So if you go look at my form, which I'm sure everybody in that audience right now has, you'll see a lot of threes. If I didn't know how to evaluate him, I put that up three. Okay? I felt like that was the fairest thing to do. But the point of all this was to tell you, on Saturday, when Mandy and I discussed this form and the problem she was having with it, and I said, Mandy, we just need to stop right now. Don't do these evaluations. Get a better form. Tell the chief we're going to put this off a month or two, and we get a good form, and then re-advocate him at that time. Thought that was what was going to happen. I went on vacation. The next week, about midweek, I get a phone call from Mandy. She said, the chief's called a meeting with you, the sheriff, me, and the chief. And I said, when's that meeting? She said, about three hours. Well, the problem was I was five and a half hours away from Dunellen. I said, I can't make it. So I asked her to find somebody else to go. My understanding is Tim went to that meeting. There seemed to be some confusion about that meeting. Paper keeps talking about there was a meeting, and the council knew about the resignation of the chief and the entire police department at that meeting. That is not true. That is a false. At that meeting, it was expressed to me, what happened was the chief was, might design, had decided, and the sheriff stood up and said, whatever support he could provide to Dunellen, he would do, whether that was a temporary chief or any other way. Then, at 2:00 on April 3rd, there was a Zoom meeting between the chief, the sheriff, and what I believe was the entire police force of Dunellen. No one from the city council or the staff was at that meeting. When that meeting ended, the chief came over here and broadcast to everybody in the world that he was going to advise us of his exit plan, which was his leaving the force, and that every one of the 10 officers was leaving with it. That was the first time we heard that. Okay? What I'm trying to get at there was two meetings between the chief, the sheriff, and the police. And the second one, where it was decided all the policemen were going to leave, no one from this city council was there. As I said, it's the only quote that I had that week, I was shocked, because I understood the chief might be leaving, but no one had advised anyone on this council, including me, that the entire police force was leaving. Then, I can't believe I did all this, but anyway. Then, I got on the phone. I called our lawyers, both Andrew and Patrick. We had a number of discussions. I called the League of Mayor's Legal Counsel, Florida League of Cities Legal Counsel, and the Florida Commissioner of Ethics. And I told them all the stories, sent them all the articles, and said, what can I do? And we're still looking into that. Because, again, I was shocked that this had happened, that our police chief had stood up in a meeting and said every one of our police officers was going to resign. Please bear with me, I'm trying to stay calm. To date, we have received one resignation. That is of the chief. We got it last Wednesday. This city hall has not received another resignation from any of our 10 officers. Now, the police department may have, but they have not shared it with us. I called for a copy of the Zoom call from both Marion County Sheriff's Office and the Dunellen Police Department, and it's told there was no transcript or no copy of that call, which I, again, found that a little disturbing, that there could be a call this important, that there was no transcript of that call available to the council, since no one on the council was at the meeting. And this involves half the employees of this town. We had a meeting last week. I think the council made it very clear, and the reason for me asking for a show of hands, because some of the media still haven't got it. This council supports our police. This council will never get rid of this police without a mandate from the people of this town. And I mean the people that are residents of Dunellen, not the other 15,000 or 20,000 people that have Dunellen addresses. We want our police department. Last week, at that meeting, right before the meeting started, the chief came up here and turned in his resignation letter. We did not address it at that time. We will address it tonight. I hope our Marion County Sheriff and his department will support whatever our needs are after this all transpires. And I believe he will. I do know of either three or four people that have filed the paperwork to turn over their personnel files in the police department to the Marion County Sheriff. So I know there are three or four people that are looking at this opportunity. Okay? I get it. But there have been no resignations. What I still find very disturbing about all the events that have taken place over the last two or three weeks is, one, where our chief had the authority to, one, have a meeting such as this without anyone from the council being there. I also find it a little disturbing that the chief felt like he had the authority to negotiate and sell all our patrol cars. He had the ability to negotiate and sell all of our police equipment, all our guns, the leaching of our building, and supporting the termination of this entire department. I just can't find in our code, charter, and manuals where he has the authority to do any of that. I also question where he has the authority to keep running to the media every time he gets upset about something. Okay? Because it isn't there. So my question would be, who authorized all of this? And the only one I can come back to is Chief McQuaid. I guess that's all I got. I've got some other things I want to say, but I don't think I've taken up enough time. I hope you understand my feelings here, and I'm trying to be calm about this, but I'm very upset. I think the actions of our chief and his illustrious career, and I believe he had a wonderful career up till about three weeks ago. Since then, I think he's tarnished that career, and that is my personal feeling. So I'm going to turn this over to the other members of the council for them to speak any way they want.
I'd be glad to go first.
Please.
Mayor Dun, I'm with you in your points you have brought up. However, there was one error that you made in the statement.
Yes.
The statement you made was that Chief McQuaid stated, my officers are going to resign. That is not what he said. He said, oops, wrong page.
Well, you read it last meeting, so I know you got it.
It is the exact words. And again, I checked the transcript with the audio on YouTube, so I'm correct. He did not say, my officers are going to resign. He said, all of the officers at the Dunellen Police Department are resigning. His exact words, like, check it out. It's on YouTube. They're resigning. He's speaking for every one of his officers. That was wrong, because I have found out since, through my contacts, that there are officers who are not resigning. One of his officers want to be our police chief. That is reality. Mike McQuaid is in some reality within his head, simply for his own ego, and that is a shame. And I put a note on the bottom of my notes for last week's meeting. Arrogance is harmless. Doesn't hurt anybody, except maybe the person who was arrogant. But ignorance harms people. Believe that. He actually believed that he had the power to go through this action. This isn't the Dunellen Police Department. It's the Mike McQuaid Police Department. Really? No, it isn't. It's always going to say Dunellen Police Department on those cards. Oh, yes. And who has he hurt? I really think he's hurt his staff. And I, you know, I take this personally, because I too have been in situations, one situation, we want to talk about it after the meeting, where I had a very important position, the leading racing stable, that was based out of New Jersey by a billionaire. And someone who was at the lead of the management team said that I wasn't a team player. Totally lie. He just wanted to get rid of me because I was not making him look good. You can't sleep at night if you think you're not going to have a job, or that you have to transition, that there's no option. I know for a fact there's at least one officer on this police force who is extremely upset by these events, because I talked to them. The others, I feel for you, that you have been put in a position, some of you may leave. I don't blame you one bit if you take a higher-paying job with better benefits, especially to younger people. But I don't think he spoke for his people, but he said, they are all resigning. The only other thing I can say is, we've got a big carrot on the stick when McQuaid made state that it's not going to cost the council, I guess he meant the city of Dunellen, to match what you currently provide to the citizens of Dunellen. And then, later on in his conversation, he says, oh, the county is already creating an ordinance, already going to create an ordinance, and the taxpayers will be paying for this. Not true. There's no ordinance being drawn up. We haven't heard from our county commissioners that there's an ordinance being drawn up, that there's going to be a transference of law enforcement in this community, and that the county commissioners are already working on an ordinance where they're going to throw another tax increase at you to pay for it? And I will say, I'm going to make only one more statement. It's four words. Four words. Everybody here has been in some position where they had great responsibilities within their business. And those four words are, first, do no harm. Mike McQuaid has not done any harm to our community or our police force until a couple weeks ago. Now he has done harm, and it is not tolerable. And that ends my comments.
I have nothing to add. I feel confident that we have a council that can move past this, wish Mike McQuaid the best in his retirement, and move on and do what's right for our city, and focus on next steps. So I look forward to that.
I start out saying with, I agree with everything that the council has said. On, I put a note to myself, very big, bold letters, as my own emotions, to stay focused as my own emotion, run the gamut on this issue. At the end of the day, the only thing that matters is what is best for the city, residents, businesses, and visitors. That's it. I'm going to repeat similar to what I said last week. Executive positions cannot make decisions based on personal emotions. They must separate themselves for the greater good. The damage created from executive positions when they fail wide open is too great. If there's an issue, we need to resolve the issue, not scorch the earth. At this level, damage control is too great and too costly. And everybody else said everything I had in mind, so I'm done. Thank you. Again, I hope folks in the audience and everybody out in Zoom world understands the position of this council. One, I think Mike McQuaid has done an excellent job, I was talking about three weeks ago. Some of us wrote some very critical evaluations of him, mainly to have him correct the actions he had taken. Nothing catastrophic. But what he did over the next three weeks was pretty bad. Okay? And number two, I want to make sure it's very clear that we do not intend on eliminating our Dunellen police force. And whatever fallout we have, we will work to salvage what is there, find a new temporary and permanent chief, and also go on. Life goes on. Okay? I think the next thing we need to discuss is the resignation the chief turned in actually last week. Okay. Basically, for y'all, it was dated last April 12th. Says, please accept my letter as official notice of resignation, chief, Dunellen Police Department. My fine bait would be up to 90 days. Okay? It was signed by the chief. Can I get a motion to accept this resignation?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Chief McQuaid effective May 12th.
May 12th, okay. Do I have a second?
And council, if there's going to be a motion and you're in a position to make a decision, you do need to take public comment prior to that.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Would anybody like to make a public comment about the chief's resignation on April 12th?
May 12th.
Larry Winkler, I have something else for you.
Little Winkler?
The young lady was right. Let it go, go forward. Chief is a good friend of mine, has been for years. But he'll still, still, you go live, go forward. Do that, okay?
Sure.
I got another couple of comments later, okay?
Okay. Does anybody else have a public comment they'd like to make? Go ahead.
Who is Sheriff Marion County. Real quick, I don't know what y'all intend to be on this, but I want to just provide a little advice regarding this and the acceptance of his resignation. I do know, I think there's 90 days in there. Whatever path it has to take out, because I know you've asked, Mayor, I know you've asked me personally, certain things that I would be able to do in my office.
Right.
The date in which we, you decide to finally make it, please keep in mind that there would be a transition somewhere in here for a length of time to continue. So that's the only thing that I ask and bring up before you. So thank you.
I totally agree with you, Billy. There's going to be a lot of transition with this, and I definitely see that coming. Okay? But I appreciate your comment. I also appreciate your support. Does anybody else in the audience have a comment? Does anybody on Zoom, Mandy, have, or on the internet?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Would anybody on the council like to discuss this?
I would.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
I have concerns with the 12th. Chief's actions over the past couple of weeks do not reflect what's best for Dunellen. Based on the chief's actions, going out on his own to dissolve the Dunellen PD and everything else that's been mentioned, what gives us confidence that this, these actions are not going to continue?
Tim, could you repeat that louder?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The chief's actions over the past couple of weeks do not reflect what is best for Dunellen. And everything, everybody mentioned everything up here, pretty much. Based on the chief's actions of going out on his own to dissolve the Dunellen PD and everything else that was mentioned, for personal reasons, without the authority to do so, what makes us confident that he's capable of continuing the duties of a police chief in the best interest of the city up to the 12th?
I can maybe speak to that. I think that, at the time that the chief made his public exit plan, he used the term 30, 60, 90. So I felt that 30 days would, I felt that 30 days was the appropriate timeframe to, again, usher him into retirement, and it would give us this period between now and May 12th to do some planning. And I know that the staff has already been collecting some interest, so I feel like we do have some options in next steps. So while I understand that there is credence in what the sheriff is saying about the need to have appropriate times for transitions, I just think that we're a strong council, we're doing a lot of legwork, we're confident about keeping things local, and so that's why I think that May 12th both respects Chief McQuaid and his requests, and also meets the needs of the city, as the city council continues to maintain control of what happens next.
Brett, do you have any comments?
No. I do only respect to the two persons who have a keen interest in filling the role of police chief here for Dunellen. I think Chief McQuaid, if he is present, he'll be able to answer a lot of their questions. And of course, that relationship with Marion County Sheriff's Department, that is so also important, the chief can assist them, this person, whoever we decide to hire. And I think, I hate to go out on, but I think it's, the hiring is going to be expedient. He can assist them, and I trust that he will. So I think Juliana's suggestion of May 12th is very appropriate.
Okay. Chief, I'm going to ask you a question, and hopefully you feel obligated to respond. I know you made it very clear that, in all the news articles, that you would be willing to help with the 30, 60, 90 day transition to the Marion County Sheriff's Department. My question to you is, that's probably not what's going to happen, since we do have two or three people who have expressed interest in your position. Will you help us transition to this temporary chief?
Absolutely.
I knew you'd say that. I just wanted to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the resignation out 30 days from the date it was delivered, which was April 12th, so that would go to May the 12th.
Are we ready to vote?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Pass is unanimous. Chief, I do want to tell you, I appreciate all you have done. And I'm about to laugh about something, but what y'all don't understand while this is going on, Chief is still calling me every time there is a, somebody who passes away in this town. He's been doing it up till, what, two nights ago?
Two nights.
Every time someone is found OD'd, we couldn't revive them, other problems, people, you know, in certain situations. Our chief has called me every night to say, "Look out. You may get phone calls on this. This is what's going on." And as a mayor, I appreciate it, because I do see things after you call me wanting to know what in the world are all the police been doing over here? And I do appreciate that. And I appreciate everything you've done. Okay. All right. Now, can we have another discussion that we need to take on tonight about the police department? Probably other than, when are we going to start reviewing these candidates?
Well, I know that it's been, I know the information has been very recent and very forthcoming. Fortunately, I've had the opportunity to review on two of the applicants. One that I understand is here within our department, one that is from Ocala. And I know that there's a third, perhaps more distant, option. If, I don't know if the council feels prepared to talk about, to talk about the options, or if anyone's had opportunity to connect with these people. So I guess I'm interested on where people stand with that. I know we want to keep things moving as we try to appoint someone else and get this transition going.
Sure. Tim, go ahead.
I would like to ask if we could have both those candidates come here and have a meeting with them, so not only us council people, but the public can ask them questions. Their resumes are outstanding, that's all I can say. They have been associated either with the Ocala Police, with, actually, both the Ocala Police Department. And I think the public needs to see those resumes, we'll make them public, and get input. And it's not going to be an easy decision. I have both resumes here. They are, I used a lot of printing paper, because these persons have been so active. They have been appreciated by the departments they have worked with. They have worked with the public beyond their roles in law enforcement, but also as volunteers and leaders in their communities. So, let's have, if we could, both candidates come in, speak with us.
Brett, do you have any thoughts on this?
No.
Okay. I think, again, honestly, to my surprise, these two folks stepped up pretty quickly. In fact, I don't think last week I knew either one of them, and this week, I know both of them, and there may actually be a third. And for the public, I failed to make that statement. We have some folks interested in taking the temporary chief position, and of course, I think both of them are hopeful that eventually that may lead to the permanent chief position. So, that all happened this week. I would say, Mandy and Michelle, they just need to be on the agenda. Our next meeting is May 1, so let's just get it going. And I think with the quality of the candidates I've seen, I think, you know, that only gives us a little time to work forward, unless you folks want to have another special meeting, you know? I'm retired.
I personally have concern with waiting two weeks. If we know who the candidates are, and we have their resumes, if your intent is to give the public time to see it, and if you all want to be speaking with these people, I would say special meeting, and I would be in favor of doing it as soon as possible.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I will make.
I don't see the benefit in waiting.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Let's move it up.
Sheriff, do you speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Sheriff, before you move forward, out of respect of council and Dunellen, can I offer a recess? Now, because of sunshine law, I can't talk to all of y'all at once. But can we have a recess so I can discuss something with you, Mayor, and then you make a determination how to proceed forward? Here's the thing, this isn't the first time I've been before this council regarding the law enforcement services of Dunellen.
Exactly.
And to be frank, I'm getting tired of coming in here and then explaining, offering, and everything. Don't take that the wrong way, because every citizen of my county is important to me, regardless if they're in the city limits or not. And I'm here for the city of Dunellen. But I do think that there are things that I have that you should know. That way, we can discuss it now, instead of doing it again in another date and time.
Sure.
If you're good with that.
Sure. Can we have a recess for, what, 10, 15 minutes? What are you going to do?
The city council wishes to recess. The city council can recess, yes.
Okay.
I have an objection. I think having a one-on-between you, Mayor Dunn, is not appropriate. I think you should discuss right now in public what you have to say. And I'm going to ask you to do that.
Well, one, you can't tell me what to do, ma'am. Sorry.
I understand that.
Two, and I would ask for the recess so that I can talk to you afterwards, before I publicly discuss this. Because what's more important to me are the people that serve you, and I do not ever want to do harm to them.
Uh huh.
I hope that makes sense, ma'am. Not Chief McQuaid, the employees of the police department.
I still object, and I'm going to hold my objection.
Okay.
Any further dis- Juliana, I can't hear you.
Oh, I said it may need to go to the vote, and I'm wondering if there's any further discussion.
What a motion to be able to meet with the sheriff one-on-one, just me. Do I have a motion to do that?
Second. I'll make a motion to take a recess to allow the mayor to meet with-
By order, well, the public, be able to respond today, what was said today, or what's-
Yeah, the meeting ain't over.
This happened.
We're just talking about doing a recess, but the meeting's not over.
And council, what I'd recommend in this case, normally you wouldn't need a, you know, you don't need a motion procedurally to recess, but since it is going to that and is procedurally, and given the gravity of the situation, I do recommend you take public comment on that decision.
Oh, okay. All right. Do we have any public comments on whether this meeting should be basically put in recess, so I can talk to the sheriff about this matter before we take a final vote on what to do next?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Ron, come on up.
Sheriff Billy Woods, this would be a windfall for him to get the police department, to get this area. He's going to make a lot of money on it. He's going to get people that are fully trained, people that he won't have to hire and train himself and spend thousands and thousands of dollars doing something. He wants this, and he wants it badly, or he wouldn't be here night after night. And now he wants a personal talk with the mayor. Once again, he's talking this up, and the citizens aren't involved. He did it twice with the chief, with meetings, and now he's trying to do it with the mayor. I don't trust it. I don't want Billy Woods into Dunellen. I don't think Dunellen wants Billy Woods into Dunellen.
Just walk out.
Hey, anybody's name, Juliana?
Come on up. If you wouldn't mind giving us your address, full name and address, and then you're allowed to speak.
Yes, my name is David Paul. I'm at 12088 Lakeview Circle. I'm not a full-time resident, but pay a lot of taxes here, and I don't have a vacation rental. I live here, all right? I love this town, and we've gone through a lot here, and I'm pretty unhappy. I got a call from my neighbor to advise me about what was going on. And I could talk for about two hours about this. Been in business a long time. I had a lot of people working for me, and I'm about as straight as they come. My personal opinion regarding this issue, this is such a petulant issue. I think we've gone beyond the bounds of logic and reason, and it's got an emotional penchant. As far along as we are, I think what you should do is talk to the sheriff. And I've known a lot of sheriffs in my life. They all drink scotch, by the way. I never understood that. But I think if he's got something that's appropriate and important, and it probably could be, and I don't know, a personal issue, not from himself, but from one of the applicants, which I don't know, he needs to reveal that. He needs to reveal it. And I think, given all that we're dealing with, the sun will rise tomorrow. I've said it to a lot of people, and you need to be aware of some issue that may be really telling for our city. So, I would leave it at that. My counsel would be, I meet with the guy for 15 minutes. He's a politician too, but he's a smart politician. He's going to tell us something that may be really, really important. And I just would like to have that opportunity, and I trust you, as the mayor, enough to disseminate that if, that information to the people as necessary. But somebody's got to know something. I would hate to have this pop up on us a year from now or two years from now. That's my counsel. So.
Okay. Thank you, David. Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Andy Arrelo, 11928 North Williams Street. So, first of all, I believe that all discussions should be important, so we need to find out what he wants to say. I want to say first, I want to have a police department in Dunellen. It is very, very important for us to have protection in here. My major concern is, are we going to be able to budget it? There's going to be a lot of issues to be able to hire new people out here at the rate that they've been paid over the past years. It's going to be very hard to persuade police officers to come into that police building. It's going to be very hard to know that there's a lot of issues in the city between the department and the police department, or should say, the council and the police department. It's going to be very hard if we lose any of our officers, and I've had discussions with a few of them, and I've, you know, it's a last-minute decision. And if they all leave, or a majority leave, and you find a chief, we're still not going to have a department. We're still not going to have a suitable building. So, we really need to find out what our best options are. building. So we really need to find out what our best options are. My best option is, we find it in the budget to be able to give increases. We need to find it in the budget to figure out the debacle with that building. We need to find out, in most cities, most police departments and city council are very intertwined. It seems like it's not here. It's been this way for years. So we definitely need to find what the fix is, and that clock is ticking. So we really need to find that now. I just, I really hope that we're able to keep a police department in here. But if that's not going to be fiscally possible, then we need to know what our Plan B is. I sat up here in front of this council literally 20 years ago, wanting to know why the company that I came from, why can I pay a lost prevention officer more than our police department? That hasn't changed. So we need to be able to afford to fix it. If we're not able to fix it, we need to know what we need to do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Excuse me.
I guess my question is, maybe I'm missing something here, but previously you had mentioned something about the Zoom meeting and there not being any kind of transcript or anything. And then private conversation, it seems contradictory to me. I understand if there's privacy issues, but at the very least, the whole council should be included in the conversation. I don't quite understand, because it's like...
I understand.
Okay, thanks.
I can address that pretty quickly. This council cannot meet except in a public meeting with everyone as a group. That's called the sunshine law in Florida, okay? So yeah, I wish we could all pile out in the other room, talk to the sheriff, and come back. But we cannot do that unless we're in a setting with the public. Okay? I find it extremely frustrating. But anyway, that's the reason we cannot do that. And back to your question, again, about a private meeting, again, we're talking about a very public item, and I struggle with this. But if, you know, I like things out in the sunshine, I guess, but no, I don't, but I do in this case. But if the sheriff has something that's critical for this town to know, the only way he can get it to me is in a private setting. We're going to figure out how to do that.
I can talk.
Okay.
And before I get into it, let me address a couple of things. Whether you like me or not, I will always protect you. I will stand in line in front of anybody to protect your life.
What are you paid to do?
No, sir. It's my calling. That's what I'd do no matter what. I'm not here for myself.
Point of order is to address the chair.
Okay, yes.
Comments need to address the chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not here for me. As I've said, I've been here before, but not at my request, at the council's request.
Right.
And I'm here to serve the public no matter how it looks. So to solve the resolution of you and I having to meet that people do not understand why, although you just explained it quite well, and in which the sunshine law does not apply to me.
Right.
It applies to you. First, let me address a couple of things. The meetings. The meetings were not intended, nor was it a negotiation, and Chief's was not there to, for me to take over the police. It was if the possibility occurred, because again, this question has come before this council before, of what I was able to do. Employees had questions, and Tim was there, along with Manny. And during that first meeting, it was abundantly clear that that decision was solely to y'all. Tim, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's what came out of my mouth. So the Zoom meeting, the Zoom meeting was solely because the employees had more questions for me, me alone, not of taking over, but questions if they were employed by me. Benefits, what I offer, the bonuses that I offer when I hire individuals. That's their price. That's why I will protect it. Now, you saw me leave and have a discussion with them, and they're okay with me talking to you in public. And that's what I want to be, get assured from them, that they're okay. Because for me, I don't care. You should know that by now. I don't care what the media thinks, and I don't care what any other entity thinks. What I care about is what they, to protect them. Because this isn't the first game in my 33 years of being at the bottom of the total bowl and not knowing what my career is going to be. You have five individuals in control of you and your employee. So the dilemma which you are facing, and I've got some papers for you, just so that you have it. So when I talk, you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's start with your dilemma. I have the application of every single one of your employees except for one. And I'm hiring all of them that have put in their application. So what that means is when all of my paperwork is done, and that I am able to take them on, you are no longer in essence, well, you only have one officer here working. That is the dilemma which you will face. Question is, it's how do we move forward from there? And the first option is because you will not have a police force, because then I will be duty-bound to respond to calls within the city of Dunellen, legislatively and by the Constitution. Now what that looks like is it means the Dunellen district would serve you, and we would only be able to respond, and our response time, because of the size of our county, is usually eight to 10 minutes. But your calls will be prioritized for whatever the district calls are. They will be combined. In my district's average, average each district, and there's 12, roughly 5,000 to 6,000 calls a month. That's what the first picture looks like. Second picture is what I have listed for you as option B. I've been here before to tell you what it would cost if you just had deputies coming in here. Obviously, I've got a tab to show you the employees whose applications I do have. If, now obviously, I cannot service, dedicate eight, six, currently you operate with eight officers, is what you have, four on A squad, four on B squad, to service day, afternoon, and night. I cannot just give you eight deputies to work just just the city of Dunellen. That's why the first option A is there. Option B is if you were to basically hire my deputies to work solely in the city of Dunellen for a period of time. Now because of the magnitude of the loss of employees, you're looking up to one year, probably. And I'm speaking from a CEO of a law enforcement agency to tell you the time it takes to hire, the time it takes for field training, and have everybody up to speed in what you need. It'll probably take a year. So these numbers are based on a year, which can go up a little or come down a little. Take it in consideration the capital items that would not have to be applied to each of the deputies, which is obviously the guns, tasers, my portable radios, and the vehicles. The vehicles, you look on option B, vehicle, the vehicles are prorated over a five-year life. So I have it only calculated in there for one year. Now you can see in the end, well, it'll be in the second one, you'll see here in a minute, but the total cost for one deputy is $133,000. That's what my cost is. So eight deputies servicing here, which that also means because I cannot provide you from the road, I cannot steal from the road, what I have already working to come solely dedicated in there, these individuals will be working on overtime, and they're choosing whoever picks to work. That total cost is just under 1.1 million dollars. Now, option C has to do with if, and again, this is an if, I'm not asking, I'm giving you your options. So let me make that clear. If you choose to dissolve the police department. Currently, as you can see, I've got it laid out for you. This is from our tax collectors, I mean property appraisers, excuse me, property appraiser Jimmy Cohen's office. Currently Dunellen has 1,573 parcels for a total taxable value at the current value, okay, of 211,940, I'm sorry, 211 million, 940,042. The MSTU, which that's what you would have to enter in order to afford the law enforcement, the law enforcement MSTU for your taxable, would generate $788,000, just over 788,000. So if you go to option C, again, I'm not here to screw the city of Dunellen over, okay? If I take out all of the capital items, and with, and here's the other thing I forgot to address, Mayor, that you brought up, is about the capital items. That was not Chief McQuaid's suggestion. That was mine, my suggestion, to help your costs. The items that I suggested were the items of which are on the officers, or with the officers, the vehicles, the guns, rifle, taser, and the radio, their one-time cost, which is calculated in all of my deputies. If the city so chooses to help you negotiate a better price regarding as to the servicing to ensure that, one, I'm not being screwed as well, Tim, is if you gave me the capital items, and I take those capital items out, you can see that the total cost of eight deputies would be 875,975, which is a whole lot more than the MSTU law enforcement MSTU would generate. So I would not benefit from this, and I would not gain any financial funding If I'm here to attempt to sell things that you need to take into consideration, one, your growth, one, as one gentleman has mentioned, what you're able to generate in evidence, to achieve what you want for your employees, which I think is fabulous and outstanding. Reality sometimes is not what we want. Now, come October 1st, my starting pay will be 53,300. These officers, the ones that come, because of a pay plan in which I have in place for all of my deputies, and based on their training, the majority of them within two to three years will be at the 70,000. So for them, if I sat in their shoes, it's a no-brainer for me, of my career, of where I want to advance. You and I have had that discussions as well, of moving forward. Now, I have haters, I have lovers, I have all kinds. The one thing I don't, and I've heard each of y'all say in this council, you want to retain it, and I think it is absolutely outstanding. And Jan, I think you were here the last time I was up here, and I even told you to retain it. I don't disagree with that, because I think it's important for municipality. But can I provide the same services in which you have? Absolutely. Because if you choose option C, every single one of them will stay right where they are. And where that benefits me, one, they know each of you, two, they know their residents, three, they know their businesses. And in that scenario, you would have your own district. They would service only Dunellen, and that's what they would be dedicated to. However, as you have mentioned, Mayor, you have done a PR, which I have before me, what is alarming and a little confusing. I'm not looking for answers to my questions, because some of the statements in here, to the degree of, while I walk the streets of Dunellen, this past year, as a general rule, the residents do not support the police and think the police do very little for Dunellen. Most think Dunellen police should be shut down, and we should use the Marion County Sheriff's Department. I only say that because I don't want, if I have to come in, I don't want animosity towards my officers, towards my deputies. That's what I don't, because they would be here to serve you. But you're not the only one. I've heard it. Now, I know there's a whole lot of people in here that would support the state, and it's outstanding. I think it's great. But I have to pause on certain things, to say, why are we saying one thing, and then saying it a different way in another time? This is the reality in which you have to face. This decision's yours. I'm here no matter what. And yes, if you continue forward, whatever you need, I am here for you. If I have to put a lieutenant like it did one time years ago, I will have a lieutenant here for you, if it is necessary. So I will pause right there. If there's any questions for me.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Sheriff, what my notes are here is advantages of a local police department, and then I have not provided by the sheriff department with a question mark, because I'm not sure. One of them is enforcement of city ordinances. Will city ordinances themselves be, are they able to be enforced by deputies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Parking enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Traffic accidents?
Now that's, I did forget that. Let me address that. In scenario C, traffic crashes, where I have a dedicated unit solely here and using them, because they know how to work crashes. And I'll be frank, my guys do not, because I do not work crashes. So in scenario C, I've already made the decision that that practice would continue, because they know how. And I would have to purchase the program for their traffic crash reports. So in scenario C, yes. Scenario B, no, because what that would mean is I would have to train all 678 of my deputies in traffic investigations. And I'm not to that level, and that causes me no harm.
Okay.
So B, no. So C, yes.
Gotcha. Okay. How about Marine Patrol?
Absolutely. I think it's vital. Obviously, I have a Marine Patrol that services already the Ringel River.
Right.
Waterways here in Dunellen.
Right.
The part-time position would stay. And actually, that part-time position, I'm absorbing into my budget. It wouldn't be added to you. That part-time position would be added in for me to be responsible for, and that position would stay as is, would not be any different.
Okay, because presently, the way, in reality, the way the Marine Patrol works, is working, is the sheriff deputy is the sheriff deputy is more towards the KP whole area, and the Dunellen officer is more on the southern side of the river.
Right. And that's to the old thing, you don't play in somebody else's sandbox. I mean, we're here to come no matter what. But if, obviously, that position is coming with me, I'm not going to change that. It will stay there and service the entire river.
Okay. Business after hour security checks?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. The only other thing I see is maybe the efficiency of communicating local issues. If...
No, that's an excellent question, and thank you, because that's another point I forgot. And that's why I like questions. I always forget.
Sure, I understand.
If, and option C, if it comes to my office, the lieutenant would be available to you. Now, we can enter a local agreement that that lieutenant has to come here before council to give you whatever updates, whether it be for crime or whatever concerns, but that lieutenant will service the city of Dunellen.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You know, I'm going to have a question.
Oh, absolutely. I wouldn't expect any less from you, Jan.
This is such an overwhelming conversation.
Now, you have the YAS.
Okay. But I was anticipating, okay, what's going on right now. The city of Dunellen is a small community, and we have a small tax base as far as what, we have constraints on our budget that are, thank goodness, things have leveled off. We have a balanced budget, but it is literally to the cent.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we would decide, doesn't affect us right now, any decision we would make to have services of law enforcement taken over by the Marion County Sheriff's Department, what kind of permanence, okay, there's going to be a changing of the guard. County commissioners are going to change. Sooner or later, we're going to miss you. You're going to retire. Who's going to take, who's going to take on the responsibility of assuring that the agreement that we would make in the next couple of weeks or so with Marion County Sheriff's Department will have any permanence? And there within lies a problem because you did, upon our request, come to us on March 9th, 2021. And here was your statement, and it involves dollars and cents. And this is really what, what counts right now. And you said, as I explained last night, again, this is dated March 9th, 2021, I had just taken off several months, as I explained last night, in order for my office, that would be the Marion County Sheriff's Office, to provide a dedicated law enforcement presence solely for the city of Dunellen, and to match what you currently provide to the citizens of Dunellen, the contract amount would be 2,537,375 dollars. That wasn't very long ago, and now you've come up with a better deal. But there are problems within, again, with the permanence of a contract. Depreciation of equipment, patrol cars. How much, Mandy?
About 40-some thousand dollars.
Other depreciation of equipment, new equipment, and so on. Dunellen, I asked for this from our finance manager and got this yesterday, oh, as Sheriff Woods informed us on his last appearance here, the Marion County Sheriff's Department cannot apply for USDA grants. Dunellen can because of our population and economic situation. In the last five years, summary, thanks to Jan Smith, USDA community assistance grants, what Dunellen got, and the Sheriff's Department cannot apply for these grants. Here's what we got. In 2022, which is just last year, we got a patrol car, total price was 40,275 USDA grant-funded three patrol vehicles. We asked for 109,000, actually more, it's around there, 110,000. The grant reimbursement was 81,600 with the city match of 28,000. And I could go on. There was a truck for the police department, another patrol car. The summary, and I want you to all listen to this, because of the city of Dunellen's ability to apply for these grants, the total grant reimbursement from the USDA community assistance grants in the last five years was 148,555 dollars. That's a heck of a lot of money. What happens when our police cruisers start falling apart? Would Marion County Sheriff's Department want more and more money? Would they raise that little tax they want to send you all? Okay. So yes, the city of Dunellen did put out a total of 154,000, but it was almost an equal grant that we received for equipment, and that was, the grant reimbursements in five years was 148,554. And for little old Dunellen, that's a big chunk of change. The other problem I had is salaries and benefits for the Marion County Sheriff's Office. They're not going to stay at what they are. They certainly deserve what they get paid. And the city of Dunellen, we got a wake-up call because of this conversation. We need to up our salaries so we can keep our people, but also pay them what they're worth. But I inquired to the city of Crystal River. I talked to a friend of mine over there, the assistant manager, city manager, Jack Dumas, and I asked him, in your relationship, if you all don't know, and I think most of you do, Crystal River's law enforcement is, they made a deal with Citrus County Sheriff's Office. I don't know how they, I think it was about 15 years ago. But here's what happened. Their contract did not hold. They got a big surprise this year when they went and conversed again with Sheriff Pendegrast. Here's what happened. The contract we made with you last year, you can rip that up, you now have an increase of 18.3 percent. That's our deal this year. From 2021 to 2022, 23, the Citrus County Sheriff's Department wants 18.27 percent more than they asked for in the previous year. And we can certainly understand why because it says, this increase is a net effect of instituting necessarily adjustments for sworn employees coupled with insilative costs.
Any agreement we would make.
It didn't hold, folks. It will not hold. And again, Sheriff Woods again told us in April, I'm sorry, March of 2021, to match your current, to match the services the city of Dunellen police forces provides to the citizens of Dunellen, the contract amount I am offering is 2,537,375 dollars. I think those numbers speak for themselves. I'm not, I was never a great math student, but I'm starting to pay attention to numbers now because the position I hold certainly depends on. The decisions we make are going to affect citizens of Dunellen next year, five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now. And Lord knows, the city of Dunellen has made some awful mistakes by people who came here waving a stick with a big hole carrot on. And I will just go back to November 2010, the green light fiasco, when persons came here and said, we have the deal of the century for you. We're going to tell you how this city can make millions of dollars through a telecommunications utility service. And you all know what happened about that. Okay. This city is in debt over a million dollars yet, paying it off at 40-some, 47,000 dollars a year?
No, ma'am. 175,000 dollars a year. Sorry, Jan. 175,000.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, stand corrected. This is what happens when you don't look down the road, folks.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Thank you.
May I answer some of those, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. First of all, there wouldn't be an MOU. So let me clarify something because you are incorrect, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Yes, ma'am. Let me address a couple of things because you are incorrect on an awful lot. Okay? The MOU is, wouldn't have to do with the money, okay? It's the services provided. So let me start with the 2 million. Well, we had in 2021 options I do not have now. As you just mentioned, you were able to get vehicles. I just told you I took vehicles out, out of the cost. And when we were looking at the police department back then, that included what would be equivalent to achieve a position of a lieutenant and then supervisors, which would be two supervisors and be included in that budget, which would come to 2 million dollars. In the scenario that I presented, and then back then, we never negotiated. Now, how business works, two entities come together. One entity always starts up high, another one starts at low, and you meet in the middle. But we never got to that one. We never negotiated. Just like me and the school board, I negotiated with them on prices for the SRO. So that's how that works. But you have options now that would benefit you to reducing the cost that I cannot argue, to be frank with you. Now, I asked for the vehicles. Here's what would benefit option number C. No, I wouldn't come back to you because option C is MSTU, a law enforcement MSTU. Now, as far as I know, we are the only county in this entire state that has it. So your scenario for Crystal River or over in Citrus County does not apply to us because they do not have a law enforcement MSTU. It comes out of a general fund. Law enforcement MSTU for me in this county can only be used for law enforcement. So the revenues generated would be solely based on what the millage rate is set for that MSTU. I cannot increase it. I cannot decrease it. I do not have that authority, must ask. Now, I asked for the cost. That's up to you. Because if a law enforcement MSTU is added, and you obviously are going to take away roughly 900,000 because it's going to go in there, then it's your choice to decide if you'll lower your general millage so that you have a flat rate. You're not changing anything. And where you benefit on the vehicles, you're absolutely correct. I cannot, because of the size of my office, cannot get grants through the FDA, okay? Because that's intended for viscerally constrained counties and small municipalities. Where you benefit is I took the vehicles out. You will never see them again. Because the one thing I have, but you don't, is I have the entire county's sales tax. So vehicles that I purchase are bought out of that sales tax. You benefit from that because that revenue doesn't come just from Dunellen. That revenue comes from every individual that purchases an item that has a sales tax attached. So you don't incur that cost. If you do, it's insignificant because it's whoever buys items in the city of Dunellen. So, ma'am, no, there never would be an increase of going under the law enforcement MSTU when it comes to Salaries, it's the same. I could raise your salaries to 70,000. Your MSTU will not change unless it is voted upon. Again, I do not have that authority, and I cannot do that. So if I change the salaries of the deputies in this city, that if we went with option C, that means that revenue that I generate from this entire county will benefit you to ensuring that the deputies get paid what they get paid. So there wouldn't be an increase unless that millage increases. And the way it sits now, you're saving roughly 100,000 dollars going into the MSTU. Now, I cannot answer to what the property values would be. I'm not standing here to tell you because I'm very, the odds are, on our growth, property values are going to go up. If you can't see that, you're blind as a bat. But that's a fact. Property values are going up. This district would benefit me. And where it would benefit me is ensuring that you are serviced with a specific district so that I don't have to put a strain on Marion Oaks, these other large subdivisions. And the MSTU that's generated from this city would assist it. It wouldn't be coming from you, the city of Dunellen. I hope that answers your questions.
Did I respond to that? Am I able to respond to that?
Go ahead.
Sheriff Woods, what you're offering is a very good deal. And again, the problem is the permanence of what you are offering. As I said before, this city has a very constrained budget. It's going to remain that way. There is growth in this area. Basically, we are not a Bellevue that has, I don't know how many commercial businesses. They are the big taxpayers. What do we get from Walmart, Jan?
I don't know.
You don't know? I think I had that in my notes. But anyway, we got a Walmart. They got how many, you know, it goes on and on. This budget that we worked with this year, our budget for the police department, total expense is 1,543,000. And the biggest chunk of that, of course, was salaries.
Ma'am, can I interject?
Please do.
Oh, I just, I just want to appreciate your questions and the thoughtful responses that we got from the sheriff. I know that we're going through each council person to see if we have questions, get them answered. I'm fairly confident that the sheriff will be available should we have other, other questions, I guess. I just want to get the information and continue to move through without being, you know, it's an important discussion, but I also think that we need to have parameters around it so that we can gather the information from the sheriff. We're all going to go back, do our homework, follow up with more questions, be able to make our decision. I know the public is here. It's really important that they weigh in. So I just don't want to get in the weeds with a lot of back and forth. Thank you.
Agreed. I just wanted to keep in mind the key word, permanence. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
The only thing I can answer to that question is, if you're generating a specific law enforcement, again, no other county in this state has it, law enforcement MSTU I'm obligated to do, to provide you the service.
I understand that.
Because that funding, the funding only comes to me.
Yes.
It doesn't go to any county commission, the county administrator. They cannot touch or use that funding whatsoever. So in essence, whether it be me or another sheriff, that's an awful lot of pressure. Because eventually, that revenue is going to be generating probably a million dollars. And how can I, as a sheriff, look you in the eye and say, I'm not going to specifically service you when you're generating 1 million dollars in essence? It'd be foolish for me politically. It'd be a nightmare for me, to be frank. And each of us know what it, the political ramifications of some of the stuff in which we do. It's an ugly fact, but it's the truth. So that is, to answer your question, Councilwoman, it's an overwhelming, overwhelming pressure on a sheriff, not just me, any sheriff sitting here to say no. And that's why a contract, that's the difference between a contract. Yeah, he can do it. But MSTU, no. It'd be way too hard. Way too hard. And look, I'm available to each of you. If you want to sit down, again, unless it's a public setting, we can have one-on-ones. That's not uncommon. That's not uncommon, folks. I do it every year with my five county commissioners. I do it with every of the school board members. The law does not say we cannot do that, that I cannot meet with you one-on-one. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I've listened tonight and I want to, and I've heard a story unravel how people got together and met and just options were discussed and it was all pretty innocuous and, but the chief comes in and makes a statement that, well, we're all going to Marion County and this is a done deal. And you've pretty much said, you know, that there's options and everything else and, but my problem with it is that, the one problem with it is that you had a Zoom meeting or you all met, the chief met with you. And the bottom line is, you accepted all of our officers and are going to hire them rather than coming back to us and telling them, rather than do that and saying, "I'm not going to accept any, I will give you a job, but let's take this back to the council and let them see what they want to do." But by you accepting their application, saying you're going to hire them, you guys met and had an end around of how to get around the council and take away our police department because you didn't come back and give us that option, did you?
Yes, I did.
When? This is the first?
That's correct. This is the first time, I've been before you.
But you, why didn't you, as the sheriff, say, "This is going on, I'm not, I will hire you, but before we do anything, let's give your counsel"? By doing what you did in hiring them, you have subjugated, you have done an end run around the council and now you're coming up here, standing here, saying that you've got three options. A, we use you, B, we lease you, or C, we turn it over. And that's what Chief McQuaid set out to do and you guys did exactly what you did. You, you-
This was in your employees' names.
What?
Your employees, they put in an application.
Did you have to accept it?
Did I?
No, did you have to?
I didn't have to accept it.
If you hadn't accepted it, we wouldn't be in this position.
But I would be foolish. I have vacancies. I want every one of them because I need to fill deputy positions. And don't think that I don't recruit from any agency in this county and don't think I don't recruit from agencies around my neighboring counties. I recruit on a regular basis.
I understand it.
And I won't apologize for that. Will not do it. But what they do, and that's what, you're missing the point here. That's why I wanted to have a private conversation because it's not my decision.
But it is, you could have said, no, it is. You could have said, "I'm going to send this back to, before we do anything, I will accept you, but let's see what the city of, that Allen Police Department, the council wants to do." And by doing what you did, you took away our option. And you can deny it all you want, but that's the way it is.
Yeah. I put myself in their shoes. And for me to come to you, I don't play devil's advocate, if someone comes to you and says, "I want to work for you,"
Yeah.
"because of whatever issues that are occurring here,"
Right.
"which is none of my business, okay? What the issues are here in Dunellen is none of my business."
Right.
"Between employees, Chief McQuaid, and y'all." It puts them in a predicament that if they would, if I'd even mentioned that possibility of them leaving, then their heads are on the chopping floor. Because if it was just arbitrarily said, "Hey, they all want to abandon you and they're going to leave you and I come before you." I said, "I'm not going to take them." Their fear is not knowing what you would do to them.
But that fear, I'm going to interrupt, that fear didn't exist until Chief McQuaid contacted you. And if he hadn't gotten a bad rating and everybody had said, "Hey, you're really good and you're doing fine," we would not be having this discussion tonight. But once he got pissed off and went to you and you guys set this up and, believe me, I understand what you're saying about hiring people. All I'm asking you is to reconsider your decision and give us, and not hire these people, tell them, "Let's take it to Dunellen, let's see what the city council has to do."
Excuse me, Council, I just want to point out the police department is unionized and just, there can't be any interference or discussion as to what could happen with their careers that definitely can't be discussed.
Okay, I understand. Anyway, I will, I, but to, if, I'm not, I'm not familiar with reading a lot of this, but it says that basically, if we agree to lease for a year because you are taking all our police officers, it costs us a little over a million dollars. Is that correct?
Unfortunately.
If we turn the department over to you, if we, and you, and then we give up solvency of it and place it in your hands, it's eight hundred seventy thousand dollars. So my question is, is it worth two hundred thousand dollars to us to keep our police department, to have a year to work it through and still keep our police department, or just to turn it over to save two hundred thousand dollars?
And I want to interject there, Rex, because I think that you make a good point. We've had a good discourse. I think a lot of this meeting was really to bring transparency to the public. So I think that we should complete our talk with the sheriff and then we should be able to, you know, move on and deliberate and follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the sheriff, if I may. I forgot this one. Is the bargaining unit that represents the deputies going to allow the new deputies to be assigned to Dunellen?
Sure. Because assignment of deputies is not up to the unit.
Okay. Could you repeat that again?
Assignment of a deputy is not up in a union contract, it's solely up to the sheriff.
Okay, so then other sheriffs in this, in this county can't apply for these Dunellen jobs because they're a hell of a lot easier probably where they are and their union won't allow you to let them come here?
See, I'm sorry, you lost.
Okay. I've heard from sheriffs that if you do this, they're going to get pissed off that are on your force right now, that if they don't have an opportunity to come to Dunellen on a job that's a whole lot easier in the section of the county they work on, they can apply for that job and take it away from these Dunellen police officers. They can't do that.
No, sir.
Okay, then that corrected that. I have a whole bunch of questions. First of all, I think it's ridiculous that this was handed to us again as a surprise, just like everything Chief McQuaid has done, okay? You've given us three options. All the employees are leaving and going to the sheriff's department. I got a question with that. I'm looking at this list, two of these guys have talked to me and they ain't leaving, but they're on this list, okay? And I also find it very interesting, the only guy that applied for Chief's job is not leaving because you didn't offer him a job, because he's taking the chief's job, okay? I think that's very interesting. Okay, just so you understand what's going on out there, he's basically giving us two options. He's taking all our policemen, that's a given. And we can either lease his policeman for one million sixty-five thousand or we can enter into an agreement and dissolve our entire police department, which is against the wishes of the town itself, for nine hundred thousand. That's what it says?
That's what it says.
Okay. Just so you all know, that's our options.
And I want to add that what's here is what's been presented to us as the facts and the sheriffs see them. But we're learning as a council that as time goes on, what we're presented with isn't always true.
Very much not true.
So it's my hope that we, that we conclude the conversation with the sheriff and that we hear from the public and that we can think about this in a, you know, in a rational way because I just don't think that we can get real fired up by something that's been handed to us when we've learned over time that what's being said isn't always what's true at the end of the day. So I, I'm just not taking this as gold right now.
Okay, let me ask you one other question. All these people applied and you said they're all going to take these jobs. Can then we fire them tonight?
Can you?
I don't know. I'm asking you, they taking your jobs?
Oh my God. Point of order.
Council, I would, I just thought the other man, again, is unionized police department, I recommend not discussing any type of, and, and-
I didn't say we would do this, I said, "Can we?" Okay.
Do you understand the fear of saying what I didn't want to say in public?
No, I don't.
I asked-
I wanted this in public.
Mayor, I wanted to talk to y'all first and to your point.
Well, why didn't you talk to us a couple of days ago?
Because you wanted to-
Why didn't you spring this on us right now?
Because I didn't know the total amount of people that applied until this morning.
Well, that's interesting because we don't know anything about it over here. In fact, I even got the first resignation.
No, that's not how it works. Listen, between, I'm pretty, I'd be interested in saying, any business, somebody that applies for a job for another corporation or another entity doesn't tell that entity that they're currently working for until they're insured that they have the job.
Exactly.
That's how that works because they get in fear of losing their job in taking a pay shift.
Oh boy, can I say something here? On the other hand, also, there are people that might have said they're going to work for you because they thought there was no other option because the city, according to Chief McQuaid, has dissolved its Dunellen Police Department. And that is exactly what I heard from several officers.
Me too.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we need to end this discussion right now. And I request that Sheriff Lee and Chief McQuaid, you can stay because we're about to vote on what's happening, your termination.
No public comments?
Anyone public comments?
Yeah.
Okay, come on.
Can I be direct? Hey, I want to thank God for giving me patience. Not to say what I truly would like to say because it'd be unprofessional and it would not be of any use. Mr. Dunn, your outburst just now was unacceptable as someone who represents the city of Dunellen and sits in a position of authority. I know it gets heated up here, but please, sir, you're representing me and everyone else in this room and those that don't, aren't here, please take it down a notch. This discussion that we are sadly having this evening is due to, again, the comments that many of y'all sat up here and said at this podium. We have it on video and we have it on transcript. This is why we are here this evening. If you don't think these officers are not wanting to leave, you are incorrect. They would have gone and made a lot more money a long time ago, but yet they stayed here out of respect for their chief, out of respect for the city council that used to be up there, and out of-
Oh, sir, do not worry about me. I've got it at home, I've seen it before.
Respect is the word. Show our officers respect. Show them the courtesy that they deserve. And we have visiting figures here, they deserve, I'm not saying I agree with it being shoved in your last minute, but I am telling you now, as a city, Mr. Dunn, as a resident, we want our city police to stay. If it has to come with other officers, that will hurt me, but it will be something that will have to be done. But let me tell you, because I know that you all ran on, "Let's lower the budget, let's lower our taxes." Well, congratulations, y'all have done the complete opposite. God bless y'all.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Wick, I live at 2363 DeGrada. A lot of prepared statement. It may be a lot of points rendered due by the previous discussion, but I'll just read it off. I come before the city council members to remind them of their fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of Dunellen, which includes fiscal prudence and due diligence in discharging their duties to the citizenry of Dunellen. At the last meeting, it was proposed that the commission be appointed to only evaluate the compensation of police officers. This to me is an incomplete assessment, only addressing the needs of the police department while disregarding the needs of the taxpayer citizenry. My concern is that the commission is proposing a cart block for raising property taxes, which was not the platform that the most recently elected members ran up. I therefore propose that the commission be also tasked with a thorough evaluation of staffing needs and duties discharged in meaningful metrics that can thereby be logically analyzed by the city council as to appropriateness of staffing levels. I provide in this Odom a copy of a white paper prepared by the association, an International City County Management Association, which presents guidelines for an analysis of police department staffing to assist in their review process. I further would like to see similar reporting presented by the chief of police to the city council on a semi-annual basis in order to keep city council informed and assist in the budgeting process. I also think it's imperative that the city council distinguish between the police services that are currently rendered by the benefit of citizens of Dunellen directly and those are primarily beneficial to special interests such as businesses or the broader public of non-citizens. I would suggest that the city council draft and approve special ordinances to levy taxation to these entities. I provide an advisory legal opinion by the state's attorney general, Miss Odom, that provides guidance in establishing special assessments for law enforcement. And there are two specific areas I suggest should be taken into consideration in this regard. And this is where I was a little off. First is Rainbow River Patrol. I believe that the Dunellen Police Department has assumed full responsibility for this. The river itself is owned by the state and also falls under the purview of the county. The river also is disproportionately utilized by non-citizens. The cost burden should not fall entirely upon the citizens.
Excuse me, everyone here has three minutes. You exceeded your three minutes.
All right.
I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind writing that down, we would be glad to read it.
I, okay. I do have it, I-
Okay, if you would do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I want to remind everybody you have three minutes to speak and if you get limited to that, I would greatly appreciate it. Go ahead, go ahead.
So kind of in light of the information, are we prepared to raise salaries twenty thousand dollars a year times eight officers?
No. Twenty thousand?
I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Excuse me, point of order, I think we're hearing public comment. It would be my preference that we could hear the public comment in total without responding.
Okay.
I think it's best not to.
So I guess my question, which could be answered here in a few minutes, is are we willing to increase the budget? Are we willing to open the dialogue with the officers? I don't think this is the first time that you've noticed that any of these officers are not happy with the council over the past few years. I believe that you know who you are, who sat up at this podium talking about our department and cutting the department. So I believe that we need to find out what we can do as a city to save this department. Unfortunately, by the new insight here, one way or another, thank you.
Kathy Dunn, 1136 Hendrix Drive. I don't think anyone has said that we are unhappy with the police department. I think the citizens have indicated indeed, going door to door, that they would like the police to do certain things that they're not doing, such as controlling speeding. I've been up here numerous times as I see that our community could be walkable and bikeable, but not if you get run over. And we- And we have asked, begged from this podium to monitor our speed, to mitigate our speed. I've been told there is no speeding in Dunellen. Well, the citizens disagree. Also advocating for studies to help us lower our speed limits, working with our Department of Transportation and county to get our speed limits lowered so that we can build the kind of city we want. The other thing is to live within our means. We have 2,000 people and no money. We cannot afford a 5,000 square foot building, nor do we need it. If the growth happens, we'll rethink it. The other thing is, you know, to me, this knee-jerk reaction of if I told Mandy that I wasn't happy with her performance and I wanted her to start doing something else, would she just quit and tell everybody in the staff to quit with her because she's unhappy with, needs communicating with her that I want her to do something else or that you want her to do something else? No. And the other thing is, two years ago or a year ago, we were told, we can't afford you. We can't afford the sheriff's department. Now all of a sudden, we can't afford not to take the sheriff. What changed? And I think if this is a genuine thing, in a year from now, this same offer should be on the table after we've consulted with our citizens. Number two, there is no reason that any of you cannot be called by any sheriff, policeman at any time. The number is on the website. And why spring it on you at a city council meeting? All of a sudden, I don't get that. To me, you're accessible by phone 24/7. So I don't think it's the police department. I think it's that we want them to do certain things to meet our special needs as one of our city councils.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
It's a sad day. All of the comments are very important, but I think we're well past that. And I think you cannot plan or make decisions without accurate information. And you just learn from the sheriff that the entire police force will be joining the sheriff's department and that the chief will resign in a matter of days. So therefore, you have no police department. Now, is there a chance to negotiate to retain the police department? I don't, I know about the sunshine laws, but I don't know if you are allowed to have each officer come before the public if this is required, to really define are they staying, are they willing to stay and discuss, or is that decision completely firm? And until you know that answer, you cannot make the right decision. And once that decision has been made by council, you still have to bring it before the public. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'm Ron McAndrew. I live at 2039 O'Beirnala, city resident. Let me first of all thank you for your opening remarks tonight. I think you cleared up a lot of things, even some of my own mistakes, and I appreciate that. And I'd like to thank everybody sitting up here for working for 25 cents an hour, because that's what it really boils down to at the end of the month. It doesn't take a genius, after hearing all of these things and conversations I've had with some of our police officers and with my own background, to see that there was not a clandestine operation going on without your knowledge, behind your back, behind the backs of the citizens of Dunellen, where there was an agreement, first of all, where Chief McQuaid failed, the sheriff comes in and gives you a program that amounts to nothing short of blackmail. I owe you. I got you by choice. And that's not how it works. I appreciate the fact that you support our police department. I know that you can hire a chief instantly, put that chief to work, hiring you officers. We have a lot of people out here. There are all kinds of people from New York and New Jersey and Wyoming that are retired police officers down here looking for a retirement job. We need to keep our police department. When they drive down the street, I know who they are. They know who I am. We wave at each other. Sometimes they stop and chat. In the last 22 years I've lived here, I've called 911 probably a dozen times relating to all sorts of things, accidents I've observed and that sort of thing. And I've always had a response, it seemed like a minute or two minutes, there was a patrol car in front of my house wherever I asked them to go. But I think we need to keep our police. Really do. Thank you.
Art Fisher, 11897 North Ohio Street, Dunellen, Arva. I was going to say good afternoon, but I missed it by a little bit. Good evening, everyone. I think it's foolish for me to say anything after everybody heard from the sheriff, but I'll just take a moment off. I have a lot more to say, but I'll take a different venue where a little more objective. The ad hominem attacks show lack of leadership and are indication of the cancer that's been resulting in this council, I apologize, to the city for a number of years. And we all need to just take a deep breath and step back and quit consulting each other's. If you have something to say to someone, do it privately. That's leadership. If they did something good, say that in public. And sure as heck, don't invite the sheriff over here and attack him. I'll have further things to say, but I did think while the arm was hot that I did need to share with you how I feel about those things. And thank you very much.
Mayor, please.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
You pick up. I don't know. You're old.
My name is Graham Black. I was a retired chief of police, and I understand what y'all are going through. Been here many times with this council and many councils that we want to get rid of the police department, we don't. And it was a back and forth, and the officers were very confused and didn't know if they'd have a job tomorrow. But it seems like you all are caring, and it may be a little bit too late, but at least you're telling them. None of them have resigned. Keep that in mind. They can apply whatever they want, but they haven't left yet. And always, you know, I used to hear a lot that I'm going to quit, I'm going to quit this job, you know, there is more money. The sheriff does offer a lot more. He has a better budget. But there are people that love to work in a small town, and there are officers that want to stay here, and there's officers that love the people here that will serve the people. So I understand that, you know, McQuaid's will leave and he's going to retire, and some officers may go, and that's to be expected. I was working one time with four officers, and we did it. And I think Jan can remember those days, and Mandy was very hard. We did it, and we hired more people, and then got back up to where we needed to be. So when you get a good chief in here that's dedicated and is going to serve you and the citizens, because remember, officers work for the citizens, and very transparent, you will get those officers to come and some will stay. And they understand that they're passing up on the, the sheriff is offering excellent stuff, you know, better pay, better everything, but there are people that don't want, they want to stay here. They love their town. This is a great town. I love all our citizens. They do support our police department, and if they're not doing their job, if you said life is speeding, that needs to be addressed and that needs to be worked on. So, you know, my years as a chief, that's why I used to hear complaints from the council and the citizens, and we try to work the best we can. We can't solve everything. And I don't know, you know, the chief, he may have had some issues or reasons, but he knows what was the best for the agency at that time. So just, I know we're all frustrated. I came here tonight, but nobody's resigned yet. And the sheriff can say he's going to hire all of them, but he hasn't. And I just wish you guys the best. You guys, I was so glad, this is the first time since I've been here that I saw every councilman hang up, you know, put their hand up and say that we want the police department. So over the years, we had great council, and I hope that you will continue and keep our police department. It's, you will then have the benefit and the power to have your police department. If it does go to a sheriff, just remember, you do lose that power, but now you can help and guide what you want your police department to be. So thank you for everything you've done. I know everybody's frustrated tonight, but there's good things going to happen. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Shields, and I live at 11406 Southwest Hendrick's Drive here in Dunellen. First thing I've got to say is wow. I don't think you all expected what you got tonight. You were blindsided. And like the young lady said before me, I didn't know you all got a pay raise. You're making 25 cents an hour. You need more. You have, you have been, in my mind, blindsided with all of the information that was presented to you tonight. I think it's time for everybody to step back for a few minutes, evaluate what's been given to you in a calm and collective manner. And I don't know if it's possible, but if, if you can interview these officers and find out what their intentions really are, I think you're working in the blind right now. But if you can, if you can find out their intentions, then you at least have a baseline to work for. If indeed all tenant, if all of them are leaving, that's one thing. If half of them, that's quite a difference. So you could build, build off of that. But thank you very much for what y'all are doing, and I wish you the best.
Is anyone else?
Mr. Robert, you used, it's ready in half my time. Goodbye.
Hold on, Ron. Yes, sir.
I'd like an opportunity, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if this was the time or place to apply, but...
Right now, good as any.
My name is Rob Bradchild, and I'm a resident of Marion County. I've been since I was a native here or many, many years ago. My address is 1419 East 14th Street in Ocala. I used to play on the banks of the rivers as growing up. You could just pick a place and camp and squat or whatever. I think this is God's country. I applied for this position approximately 10 years ago and was offered the position as chief of police on a Friday. And I was told that because of an issue they had, they needed somebody to start Monday. But I was chief executive officer of a medical center at the time, and I said, chief, I fell on almost 100 employees. I just, I love, I love this job. I would love an opportunity to serve the city of Dunellen, but I have to give notice 30, 60 days. I can't walk away from a business that big. It's dependent. So I will tell you that I've been in law enforcement most of my life. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I've been practicing law for over 40 years. I've represented police officers. I've been a certified mediator by the Supreme Court for over 20 years. I think I'm good at getting a consensus built with people. And when I heard all of the people talk, including the sheriff, you know, it just jumped out that there are solutions to all of this. There's absolute solutions. If there was no one there tomorrow to be your police department, you know, there is a solution to that. The sheriff would provide services. It may not be the service level you want in the meantime. I think this has been pointed out that there's many officers that a chief who could start immediately could interview and discuss and maybe persuade them. I have nothing wrong with getting down on my knees and begging people, and I have no problem doing that too. So I think first and foremost, you know, you do have options. And I can tell you as a instructor at the police academy, I've got a group of firemen tomorrow for 12 hours that are getting their certifications, law enforcement officers. So I'll be busy tomorrow, but anytime after that, I'm available to talk to any of you individually, collectively. And I wanted to throw my resume in the hat because I heard you all already had two, and I'm like, wait, there's one more. Don't go anywhere yet. But I do know pay scales. I do know all of this because recruiters come into the police academy classes all the time. So I think I have a unique skill set to offer, and I'm ready to have that opportunity if y'all decide, and I see my time is almost up. So if I could leave these resumes for each of y'all, please, feel free to call me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all, and y'all are fortunate to live in God's country. Thank you. I would like to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
And that's 204 Southwest 192nd Court. I think it's very, very clear that everybody wants to keep our Dunellen Police Department. I think we should have an option, and it is to what you guys have discussed, to try to talk to our Dunellen folks, if you're straight from the course of mouth per se, what they really want to do. And I think there's an urgency for this, just as this gentleman just turned in a resume, I think you're going to find people do want this job. And I'll say again, it looks good on paper when the sheriff is talking about huge amounts of money. The type of job you're going to do in the county is not what you're doing in the city. I can promise that. But I think y'all need to get dialogue with these officers, our police guys. We love these guys and women. I don't know if the city, I don't know the current ones, but we need to talk to them and find out what they want to do. We don't need the sheriff to tell us what they want to do. We need to hear from them what they want to do. I think we need to move quickly. We need our police force.
Is there anyone else?
I guess I would like to come up.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I'm the newbie here. This is my, actually, my first meeting. My name is Martina Smith. I live at 20486 DeGrana. I love this little town. I moved here from Wesley Chapel two years ago, and I fell in love with this town. And I'm a nature person. I'm an outdoor person. And I just love our blue town here. Lots of things to do, lots of fun outdoor activities. Most of the people that I have encountered have been very, very nice, very friendly. And again, this is my first meeting, listening to everyone. And I can sympathize with you, how you all feel about how information was shared with you this evening. But also, I think you should, I'm very thick on accountability and open and honest communication. And I think that's huge for all of us when I say that. And that goes, not only listening, I'm talking about active listening, always give the other person the respect when they have something to say. We don't listen when someone dialogues or gives us dialogue a lot of times because we want to know what we care about. Does that make sense? And I know I have two more minutes. I, I'm a lover of the law enforcement. I myself retired from law enforcement, and I think we need to give the utmost respect to all of our law enforcement officers. Having said that, I know that you are in a dilemma. And I'm for one, I want to keep our police department. I think the city will benefit from keeping our police department. I think if you get rid of the police department, I think we might see a lot of people leaving here. You know, the number one concern that I had moving into this town was my safety, my personal safety. I feel very safe here. I live on the river. I love my home. And I respect and appreciate everything that all the law enforcement officers do here. Is speeding a problem? Absolutely. I cannot even sympathize with anybody around here because I walk every day, almost three days a week. Every day I take my life in my own hands because people have the need to speed just coming into Dunellen, even just going through this main... I feel very safe here, I live on the river, I love my home. And I respect and appreciate everything that all the law enforcement officers do here. Is speeding a problem? Absolutely. I cannot even sympathize with anybody around here, because I walk every day, almost three days a week, and every day I take my life in my own hands, because people have the need to speed, just coming into Dunellen, even just going through this major town, people feel the need to speed. I think we need to take that very seriously. And then also crime and theft. I believe that without of our police department, we would not be where we are today, and we owe them our debt and our gratitude. So please, open yourselves up, listen, active listening, and have established a dialogue with the police department. Even though the information was presented to you the way you felt it was wrong, I believe there are acceptable solutions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Hey, David?
I wasn't on board.
Yes, my name is Dave Sworder, I live at 11835 East Blue Coat Drive in Dunellen. I also agree that I love the police department, and I think that Dunellen needs its own police department. I think our issue is a little bit bigger than even the police department. So if you look at a 30,000-foot view, the citizens of Dunellen depend on the council and the city to make a safe place to live, and a good place to live. And to do that, you have to be staffed. So we're losing our police department, but we've already lost our whole payday department and our code enforcement department. So we have a personnel issue, and over the years, we've slimmed down from having a city manager. And so I think it's a bigger issue. We have a terrible time recruiting people. So I've heard you mention that you want to do a study and figure out exactly what is the right pay scale for all the employees in the city, and I encourage you to do that. I encourage you also to look at how the council works with the departments, and make sure that we've moved into the council working and doing a lot of work and being involved in the city, but it needs to be a clear line, so you're not intruding on the different departments, and let them run themselves. So with that being said, the council for years has been debating on a new police building, and we've wasted hundreds and thousands of dollars going back and forth, this building, the other building. There's no perfect place, there's not a perfect place. So I think that we really need to meet with the police officers and find out what's their problems, and work towards solutions for them. We need to work towards a project plan for the police building, and work towards implementing that. It may be that we only spend $600,000 and work for a grant, but there's specific items that need to happen to get a new police building. So that's all part and parcel to some of the disgruntlement with the police staff and with other staff members. So we need to look at it as a whole, interview employees and see what's their problem, and see what's commonalities, and come up with fixes. But I encourage you most of all to keep our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Is anybody on Zoom? First thing I want to apologize to everyone. For the first time in three weeks, I couldn't control myself. I guess Mandy and I knew something was coming, we just didn't know what. But for you folks that haven't seen this, it basically says, "All of your policemen are leaving." And you have two options. Lease police deputies from Marion County Sheriff for $1.065,000, or dissolve your police department. That's the option. And I'm telling you, I just lost it, and I am very sorry. I guess the only thing I have, do we still want to vote on accepting the resignation of the chief? We did that. And we did that?
Yes, sir.
Sub to the 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm so lost right now.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. I've only been in Dunellen for 18 months, but I've come into the meeting for about six months, so I see a lot of faces. I just want to understand, do all of you out there understand what happened to us tonight and what happened to Dunellen? Three weeks ago, a chief came in and said, "You're leaving." They all got together, they made a deal, agreed that everybody was gonna go, doesn't tell anybody, and then tonight we all get the information, so that we, I didn't get hung out to dry, you got hung out to dry, everybody in Dunellen. And you're the people that I've seen in every meeting that care, and there's gonna be a lot of stories. So my hope is that you will convey it accurately, but not only for that, to realize that there's five people up here who do want a police department like you. And if you have a suggestion, make a suggestion, because we're gonna have to start looking at some different options. Can we get outside police officers other than Marion County? Can we put the young man in who wants to be the chief, and start hiring immediately and work with ongoing training, so that maybe instead of having eight officers, we'll only have three or four? But there's, you know, we have to realize that we got caught, but there are options. So my suggestion would be that maybe we set up another meeting in a few days, and ask the mayor to, since he is the spokesperson for the council in terms of the employees, to meet with each of the officers and find out if they're really going, so that we, instead of standing on the murky bottom of the Lithlakuchi River, which is full of springs and kind of salt, that we actually have a firm idea of how many officers we have. Does that sound reasonable?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Okay, so, and then, after we find out how many officers, we can ask around, like you said, tonight I learned about the Florida League of Cities, we can call other departments, we can find out what they would do, what other assistance are available to us, so maybe if we meet again in a week, we can have more than, hey, more than the blackmail letter.
Andrew, please.
That would be my suggestion. And Mr. Mayor? I'm gonna tell you, you may have lost your cool, I do have to hand it to you, I probably would have killed somebody. You know, and when people get up and say about decorum, you know, when something like this happens, and your first priority is the decorum with which you speak, my suggestion is you may want to look at your own values for your own actions. With that, I'll be quiet, because I probably learned a few words, just, thank you.
Yes, sir. Counsel, normally I wouldn't interject myself into a conversation at all, but I did want to point one thing out to you, and I kind of said, if you brought up the union bargaining unit with police a few times tonight, one thing I would tell you is that that's sort of a sticky root, and there's certain things that have to happen, and you are represented by labor council specifically for that. I would recommend at this point, what you would, one thing you may consider is, if you're gonna call another meeting, bringing that attorney and having them advise you specifically as to labor, what you can and can't do, before you inadvertently maybe have a conversation or something that perhaps, you know, that shouldn't happen. And so that can provide you some caution and make sure that all the interactions and everything go exactly the way that they should, and that when there are negotiations, because those will certainly, as I understand, take place, you'll have that counsel in place to advise at that time. That's all I have.
When could everybody meet? Now, we have to publish an agenda so many days ahead of time.
Typically, we try to publish at least seven days in advance. If you call special meeting next Wednesday, we could actually publish it this evening and make that...
Do we need to consult the availability of the labor attorney?
We would, I can't say that I'm positive he would be able to be here in person. He may be, if not, be able to attend by noon, but I can check with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Does, is everybody amenable to that? That would be, I think, the 26th of April? No problem. Okay, Jan, you okay with that?
I'll make it work.
Okay. I'll make it work. Do we want to do it 5:30, or we want to do it 4:30?
Earlier.
4:30?
4:30.
How about you, that gonna work with you?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll do this at 4:30 on the 26th, we'll continue this discussion. Again, I will try to reach out to as many of these officers as I can. I did find this very frustrating, because I've already talked to a number of them, and have heard that they are not leaving, or want to leave, but yet, I have a list that says they all applied, so I find that a little frustrating.
Well, can I just ask for a quick clarification from Andrew? I've been, I've not reached out to officers, I, again, I want to like, work out of an abundance of caution to stay in my lane, so do you have any, you know, words of wisdom for us?
I think a lot of that can come from the labor attorney, and perhaps, depending on what the availability is, when that description is provided to them, you know, there may be some one-on-one advice, or maybe something that you want to say to particular officers that could be run through to make sure that, you know, a line isn't crossed. And that education really needs to come from someone specialized in that field particularly.
Sure, okay.
So I'm hearing you caution us to outreach into the officers and having conversations prior to consulting.
Exactly, exactly, and I think once Mandy makes contact, labor attorney, she can disseminate that information, and then if there are questions, that can all be directed to him or her, if it's somebody else in the office that is assisting him, so that you can get the answers that you need to make sure that you stay within the confines of where you should be.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, well, I'll get ahold of him before I have any conversations with any more officers. All right.
Anybody else?
Any other?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'm very proud of my fellow council people. Questions they're asking, we stand and pay attention. You guys are the best. Thank you all are the best. This issue will be resolved, it's a big bump in the road, but it's just a roadkill, and we're gonna shove it out of the way and go on. The other thing is, this little conspiracy that went on, our sheriff thought he had us painted in a corner, but you know what? We're like kangaroo rats. We jumped out of that corner, folks, and I am so proud of you. Thank you, and we will continue this.
Well, I want to say, you're gonna motion close, but I don't think I can. I just want to thank the public for coming out to have a full house to talk about it, and I hope that the public continues to write us letters and send us emails and text messages or whatever it takes, because it's really gonna take the whole city to make these decisions. I think that early on in the meeting, I felt a little like, you know, we're a city in debt with a lot of problems, but by the end of the meeting, I really felt the spirit of the community and all of the options that we really do have. There's a lot of enthusiasm for police officers who want to serve this community, so I really look forward to moving ahead and coming up with what's best for the city.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second, okay. On the favor?
Aye.